It is 10:00 AM on August 8, 2023. We'll call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand with me if you're able and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we have one, one change to the agenda. We're going to remove item eight from consent. It's going to go on a future agenda, I believe next week's agenda, but we're pulling that. Are there any other changes to the agenda this morning?
I move approval of the agenda with the changes mentioned.
Second.
Moved and seconded Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Now it's time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can raise your hand on Zoom or step forward to the table. Seeing no one step forward or raise their hand will close public comment number one and move to consideration of proclamation recognizing August 7 through 13, 2023 as Safe and Sound Week. Supervisor Hens, did you want to read the first two?
Sure. Whereas the safe practices of Story County employees are fundamental in preventing workplace injuries, illness, and deaths. And whereas the 2021 Iowa OSHA Injury Data Report stated that in local government and state sector, there were 3.4 injury and illnesses per 100 full-time workers, and nationally, the rate was 4.5 per 100, with 77% of injuries and illnesses reported in Iowa's public sector occurring among local work, local government workers, and...
Whereas most accidents and injuries in the workplace are preventable when employees are engaged, educated, and aware of unsafe behaviors and conditions around them. And whereas successfully identifying hazards early, evaluating the risk, and, and removing or controlling hazards can proactively manage workplace hazards and injuries before they can cause harm. And whereas all employees pay, play a role in keeping each other safe while protecting themselves, coworkers, and property, those who supervise play the biggest role by providing the vision, motivation, encouragement, collaboration, and resources needed in leading the way to energize and promote participation in safety efforts, and...
Whereas Safe and Sound Week is a nationwide event held each August that recognizes and encourages the successes of workplace health and safety programs. And whereas Story County encourages all leaders and employees to contribute to this safety initiative and continue to make Story County a safe and healthy place to work. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim August 7 through 13, 2023, as Safe and Sound Week in Story County, and encourage all employees to contribute to this safety initiative and do their part to continue to make Story County a safe place to work. I move approval of the proclamation.
Second.
Moved and seconded Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Yes, did, did you want a picture? Okay, we'll, we'll do a, a picture quick. I'm sorry you're not here, Lisa.
I know, I know.
Did you print out a copy? No, okay. Okay. Oh, okay. And, oh, she's gone already. I was gonna, oh, I was gonna tell her thank you for all of her work on the Safety Committee. What is that? You hear that noise? Oh, okay. Was, okay, moving on. Um, we have no agency reports this morning. Consideration of minutes from August 1st, 2023.
I move approval of minutes as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Consideration of personnel actions.
I move approval of personnel actions as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Consent agenda.
I move approval of consent agenda items as listed with item eight pulled as, uh, addressed at the beginning of the meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Moving to public hearing items, we have first consideration of ordinance 312 amending Chapter 80.14, General Flood Plane District, and Chapter 80.15 Administration. Oh, boy, there's a lot. Chapter 85.8 and Chapter 89.01. Good morning, Amelia.
Good morning. Um, so this ordinance is amending a few chapters of our code, and the first part has to do with home business regulations. Um, the Board of Supervisors and Planning and Zoning Commission added a work program item to our annual work program to re, um, write our home business requirements to make sure they were compliant with the change in state law that requires that we can't, um, take permits for certain home businesses. So we've done that here and defined what a no-impact home business is that doesn't require a permit. Um, I'd go through the standards, but... Just go to the next.
Yeah, I just have one question being on that. That's all right, since I'm online. It says if the home business meets the above standards of approval, and then you list A through E, so... Were you meaning to say above?
Ye- yes, above and, and addition to the following.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Um, the standards above this one are for all home businesses and contain things such as, well, it doesn't create a nuisance through sound or dust.
So, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thanks. And then we're also amending our floodplain code to do two things. One is to allow the director or their designee to be the floodplain manager, so we have, um, a provision in the event that that position's vacant, like it will be soon. Um, that's language that we ran by the DNR and other communities use. Um, and then we also are introducing a provision to our floodplain standards to make stream bank stabilizations, easier to permit and easier to do. This is a common thing that a lot of residents do. And without this amendment would require a lot of engineering work to be done by a professional engineer, which isn't feasible in a lot of instances. So we've created a list of the, um, best practices that if you follow um, in a certain floodplain district, not all floodplain districts, but in certain floodplain districts, you, you don't have to hire an engineer um, to do that analysis. Um, so we hope this makes it easier to do stream bank stabilizations. And this was, we worked on with the DNR as well. So, and we included an image in the code to help folks figure out what we're talking about. So there's a certain slope. You're adding a certain size and thickness of material. You're not taking the bank up above the top. Um, and you're providing some material in the stream bed so that there isn't erosion.
I think graphics are really helpful. Some people, that just really solidifies it for them.
Yeah, Marcus made it. We appreciate his work on that. Um, and then we took this to the commission. There was one member of the public that did provide comment. They were concerned that some of the existing regulations in the home business ordinance were really broad. Um, and that home businesses should be regulated the same as residences, which is a tricky thing because, you know, we don't have parking standards for residences. We don't have noise standards for residences. So if we were to regulate them the same as residences, we'd have to adopt all those standards for everyone in Story County. So it is just simply easier to recognize that home businesses are more intense use, and therefore we have higher standards for those as our approach to regulating them. Um, and the commission did recommend approval as written, so that's alternative one. Due to the floodplain, uh, manager or their designee change, I am requesting to waive second and third consideration. We did publish in the newspaper before this hearing, and I've already sent a publication off after to make sure we're complying with state code on when we can waive second and third considerations. So I think in this instance, we'd be okay if we wanted to do that, just to make sure there isn't a gap in having a floodplain manager.
Right, right.
So you're waiving second, requesting to waive second and third consideration on the home businesses as well, or just on the floodplain?
Both, because they're written as one ordinance.
Okay.
I can take other questions, though, if there are any.
I don't have any questions.
Any questions? No, okay. Um, with that, then we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can raise your hand on Zoom or, excuse me, step forward to the podium. And seeing no one raise their hand or step forward, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion or questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve ordinance 312 amending Chapter 89.01, which is home businesses, and Chapter 85.08, which is definition and Story County sort of ordinances, and chap, Chapter 80.4, General Flood Plane District, and Chapter 80.15, Administration as presented on first consideration and waves second and third consideration.
80.14.
I'm sorry, what did I, I said 80.14 and 80.15, I thought, but...
No, you said 80.4, so 80.14.
Thank you.
Yep, I will second that.
Moved and seconded Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Thank you. Uh, next we have additional items. Consideration of request for match for broadband grants. Supervisor Merkin.
Um, we have a couple of people here who are going to make the presentation.
Okay.
Marcus Ammon and Greg Pickle, who are both on the broadband working group.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning. I'm sure my microphone's up here this time.
You're gonna make sure you're talking directly into it.
Into it, so I am clear, and Lisa can hear me as well. So, uh, good morning. So as you are aware, earlier this year, uh, Story County applied for two applications for the broadband intervention zones or the biz, uh, cer- certification from the state, for lack of a better term. And what we are doing is moving forward with that process, and we are entering the final stages for our application for two applications. One for the, the biz in Central Story County and another joint application with Boone County. Now, I will tell you tomorrow I will be in Boone County with their supervisors, giving them an update with Caleb from MIPA, and we will be moving forward with a formal ask of planning and moving forward for their local match as well. So, um, uh, so what is, so the request for Story County is that we provide a cash match for one grant for each application, which would be $30,000 per biz. Um, or reserving over, reserving 100 and then $30,000 per biz with the, um, remainder being allocated to assist with covering costs of additional households to help people connect that are lower moderate income. Yep, so, uh, where we are right now in the planning is, is that we are targeting the two applications to go in at the same time. The deadline is coming up end of August. What our target is, is to use these funds to help connect people that might not be on the mapping. OCIO for the state, uh, broadband providers, even our own working group on this has been well aware that the map was outdated the minute it was published. So this grant funds that we're gonna be asking for and targeting is gonna be used for helping people that didn't get the notice, that don't have internet access now to apply for designations, that don't know how to do that and let them know they don't even have internet. It, it's providing access to people that fell through the cracks. That is what our, our target is on this funding. I will tell you that we don't have a final number yet. Uh, we're working through the final numbers on the total grant applications. I can tell you very, very assuredly that both grant applications are gonna be in the several million dollar range. Uh, the total application allotment from the state is 150 million, give or take. Uh, this is not beat money, so that $415 million from the special government for broadband expansion is not part of this pot that we're going after. This is strictly state money, and this is, as we have been saying, and it's been getting around the state, the last of the ARPA money that's gonna be designated for broadband, so it's gonna be the easiest money to get for our residents and for our local businesses. Uh, Supervisor Merkin and myself have reached our, are, are start, starting to reach out to local businesses for letters of support, other government agencies. We are getting a very good response, and also a very good response from even home builders and developers as well that are looking to provide access to their areas that they want to develop for housing, which is a crucial need in Story County as well.
And I'd just add a couple of things. I want to recognize LeAnn Harder and, uh, Caleb Knutson, who are also working with the service providers to help on, on grant applications as needed and are part of our working group. Um, we don't know yet what Boone County's match is going to be, so when we talk about 30,000 as a cap per biz, we may take into account what Boone County's doing there as well. We also don't know the exact number of locations yet. Um, we hope to have, and we hope to have a lot more information after Friday when we're meeting with some service providers. But we wanted to get this in front of the supervisors right now because we thought it was important to reserve some, some of the remaining ARPA funds for this because what we got told in the NOFA 7 process was that it was, excuse me, it was very important that we show financial backing from the county. So we wanted to make sure that that money was available, and we may structure it, we're gonna bring it back in a couple of weeks. We may structure it a little differently per service provider or per, per purpose, depending on what we learned Friday and after that. But the 100,000 is what we're asking right now, that that be set aside, so we know we have the money to work with.
So I have a clarifying question. So are you looking at a total of like 160,000, so 100,000 set aside and then 30,000 per biz? I'm a little unclear on that.
No, the 100,000 is the grand total.
Okay, thank you.
We're asking be set aside.
Okay, thank you.
And just so be perfectly clear for the record, all these funds would be used for Story County residents, even with the joint application with Boone County. The Boone County portion would be allocated to their residents, and Story County would be on their side since the, the biz zone for that is straddling both county areas.
Thank you.
Yep.
What if Boone County doesn't, doesn't want to contribute any funds? What?
They're working on it right now. I think their intent is to try to contribute funds.
They are, the, the issue they are facing is, is that their side is obviously much bigger in the zone than the portion of Story County. So there is a high residential impact in, in Story County. On the Boone County side, it's more rural and stretched, and as we all are very well aware, the longer you go, the more it takes to put in a fiber per mileage.
Right.
So they are, they are kind of wrapping their heads around, they're looking at the same structure as Story County, they just don't know the dollar amount yet. So they have a full intent to putting something towards their contribution on it. And they will be taking the lead on their application that straddles both counties. So we have one app coming in under Story County and one app going under Boone County.
Okay, okay.
So we would be bringing the proposal back here in two weeks. Has Boone doing the similar, they're doing a similar one, just, just, they're, they're not doing an exact number when they meet tomorrow, correct?
No, no, the, what they're doing is going forward with the consensus and coming one way or the other on how they want to move forward, and then they'll come up with a firm dollar amount or a final answer at that timeframe. I can tell you that working with that application and MIPA and Caleb, our intent is to have an application along, parallel with the Story County app, working with LeAnn here and Marcus and, and our working group, so that way both apps are ready at the same time.
Great. Um, well, I, I really like the, I like the idea of having, um, that roughly 40,000 just kind of in the bank to help individual people actually close the circle there. I'm, I'm really glad to hear that's part of the, the plan at this point, anyway.
And one of our service providers really brought that up. They basically said, we know we're gonna be going past houses that aren't on this map, and people probably can't afford the hookup fee. And if the, if the house is, if it's an eligible unserved, underserved location right now, they can include that fee. But they can't. So it, that's, that was a good, uh, I think a good thought in terms of getting yet more people.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we've all heard from residents that there's a line that goes right, right in front of my house, but I can't connect to it. So, uh, yeah, thank you for, for including that. Did you have any other questions, uh, Lisa?
No, no, I do not. Thank you. Are you ready for a motion?
I am, thank you. I was trying to orient.
No, yep, no, that's, that's fine. I would approve the, uh, request for match for broadband gan, grants up to $100,000.
Second.
Moved and seconded Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye.
Wait.
And I, I, I just want to say thank you for all the work that you're doing.
I think LeAnn was trying to get our attention to say that we were wanting to have that from ARPA.
Oh, from ARPA.
Revenue loss.
But I think that's, I think we got that in the, it's in the proposal.
It's in the proposal.
Yes, it's in the proposal, and you mentioned that in your, uh, presentation as well, from ARPA funds.
Do we need to have it in the minutes specifically? Would you be willing to modify your?
Um, it's the revenue loss, Lisa.
Yes, yes. I'll just, I'll just make the motion that we, uh, approve, uh, funding for the request for match for broadband gan, grants up to $100,000 taken from revenue loss of the American Rescue Fund dollars.
Second. Moved and seconded Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye. And again, thank you for all the work you guys are doing on this. I know it's, it's an ongoing mountain we're climbing.
Almost there.
Yeah, we're getting near the top, I think.
Yeah.
Um, this one, this one should do a whole lot of, yeah, real Story County, so.
Hey, moving now to discussion and consideration of purchasing a Dodge Ram fleet vehicle from Deary of Ames for $42,680 budgeted item. Good morning, John.
Morning, board.
We don't get to see you very often.
And I owe Joby one, let me tell you. Well, as you can see, uh, Deary was low bid, and they have it on their lot. So we're asking for the okay to purchase this.
Any questions on this?
And it looked, it looked like from your memo, it met the majority of your need, um, with the material, with the materials or whatever as part of the truck. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Okay.
None.
All right.
I move approval of facilities management purchasing a Dodge Ram fleet vehicle from Deary of Ames for $42,680, which is a budgeted amount.
Second.
Moved and seconded Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Moving next to consideration of facade improvement grant request from the city of Slater for $10,000. Good morning, LeAnn.
I have a presentation. And thank you for taking the action to clarify that was ARPA revenue loss here.
Yep.
I was trying to get up really fast. Uh, the item before you is a request from the city of Slater, acting as the applicant through our facade improvement grant program. Um, the first few slides, I think we can breeze through. You've seen these several times, but for the benefit of the audience, I need to talk right in here for Lisa's benefit. Um, the purpose, again, is to provide financial assistance to set city governments. Uh, again, they act as applicants in partnership with local businesses and property owners and commercial endeavors for facade improvements. If you want to go to the next slide. The program guidelines have been, um, generally the same since the initiation of the program over 10 years ago. It's for eligible communities under 2,000 persons. And you can do a one-time reimbursement of up to 20% of the total project cost, or $10,000, whichever, whichever is greater of the two. And then the city provides an amount equal to whatever is being granted or requested by the city or by the story, by the city. Next one, the program guidelines. Um, all eligible work must be from the viewable, from the right-of-way. This is a list, the projects that can be included through the program. I won't belabor them. Again, you've seen several applications, and at the end, I'll, I'll give an overview of what you've actually taken action on. Next one. This particular property, as I says, located in the city of Slater, is actually the old Casey's Building. Um, if you'll think back several years ago, 205 Sixth Street, their property owner's Tan Core LLC, both the, um, the city clerk and I, I think the property owner, thank you, are here if we have specific questions for them. If you could go to the next one. Uh, this is just a slide that shows the location, the property, and its alignment to Sixth Street and, um, how it, how it sits on the property. The next slide, um, is a schematic of the proposed revision, revisions to the facade of the building. The amount requested again is $10,000, and City of Slater is committed to matching that at $10,000. Overall investment for the facade is part of larger improvement to the project, but the facade improvements only are $80,870. Next slide, please. Um, I know this is difficult to read on that screen. We're getting a lot of projects that used to fit nicely on one slide, but um, I just want to note the total, these are the projects that have been awarded, um, facade grants since initiation 2013. Um, the total we, the board has awarded is $66,716. Um, the matching has been $198,097. So definitely a, um, a, a good ratio there from match to, to the award. If you want to go to the next one. This is totals by community, eligible community. I will note that Story City, while now an eligible community, did receive funding years ago. They withdrew that request, and then Collins early on did submit for mural, mural painting, but was not awarded. So there are two projects that have been through a process, but just not, never awarded or were withdrawn. Um, but the numbers are in gray on that slide are if this project is awarded. So you can see how the percentages, um, would, would shift with this award of $10,000 to City of Slater. And then staff does recommend the facade grant application, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Supervisor Hens, any questions?
I do not, thank you.
Um, no questions, but I appreciate your being here.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a exciting. And this is, just, just for my own clarity, um, these are, are granted on, on application, so even though, if you go back to the slides, even though the percentages are gonna change, they're, they're, they're not, they're changing because those are the applications that came forward and were, were granted, not for, for any other reason. It's just, these are the, the communities that have, um, actively taken advantage of this economic stimulus opportunity and assistance.
The commi, the Board of Supervisors budgeted, budgets $10,000 annually. Um, in the, in the budget, however, in a past couple of years, has exceeded the amount in a couple of years. Couple of years, we haven't awarded anything. Um, it's a placeholder just to main, maintain the program, and no percentage allotments by community have ever been established. Um, and nor is it, do we have deadlines. It's just a running, running program.
Thank you. Have no other questions?
I would move, I would move approval of the facade improvement grant request for the city of Slater for ten thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved in seconded, Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Did you want to say anything about your project? No? Okay. I just wanted to give you an opportunity if you wanted to talk about it. Wonderful. In case you couldn't hear that, Lisa. The statement was that Slater is excited to have another business in town and that this is actually going to provide an opportunity for more than just one business.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Moving to discussion and consideration on request from the city of Collins to amend the urban renewal area project known as the construction of a retention area in southeastern part of town approved by the board of supervisors in two thousand nineteen.
I'm going to just do a little bit of chronology and a reminder of where, how we got to this point and then a recommendation. And the urban renewal plan in the fall of two thousand nineteen was adopted by the board of supervisors to incorporate project with the city of Collins and the amount of twenty three thousand. That was for the construction of retention area in the southeastern part of town. The application did include a proposed budget breakdown that incorporated engineering land costs, land, equipment lease, labor, materials. Again, for twenty three thousand is what was awarded to Story County, or to City of Collins from Story County. That's what was certified in debt as part of our urban renewal area approval. City Collins purchased the property that they intended to use in April of two thousand twenty twenty for ten thousand dollars. And then in August of two thousand twenty, Story County staff received a reimbursement for the funds through the urban renewal area program. And that was approved with your claims on the September twenty ninth agenda that year. So they received the twenty three thousand dollars back.
Story County received a reimbursement request.
Right, right. That's what we call it. They submitted a claim, basically. And that went through the claims process. Earlier this spring or summer, the mayor commiges with the city of Collins proposed that the board consider some different uses for the property than originally intended through the application process. As he outlined in a memo, a written document to the board, the detention, retention use was not necessarily appropriate for that property as designed by the engineer. He did note several options with a preference towards option four, which was a reuse of that property, transferring it to a entity that is not the city and then used for commercial purposes. Staff did check with our county attorney's office to see if that would even be allowable. In staff's opinion, that would not be because our, our our economic development policies clearly state that no tax increment rebate, grants, loans or assistance to private businesses is allowed. It just says Story County will not use TIF funds to participate in any direct disbursement or rebate to a private entity. The county attorney's office agreed that that option four would be a violation of that. The mayor then did ask if the ten thousand dollars for the funding that went towards the purchase of the, the property could just be returned from the city to Story County. Again, that was the amount that the city expended for the purchase of the property. The funds and staff's opinion have been all the twenty three thousand dollars, not just the ten thousand. All the twenty three thousand dollars have been expended by the city in accordance with the application that was submitted. It, that again, as I said, the application covered land purchase, it covered engineering costs. Just general expenses related to the overall design of the drainage pond and the system, the detention system. It is, we do not have a mechanism in place for the city of Collins to reimburse that ten thousand dollars back to Story County. As I said just now, the funds were expended as, as the application stated. So at this point, staff is recommending that no action be taken. The city does not reimburse Story County and nor does Story County amend the urban renewal area plan for any other purpose. That's a, I don't think that's a path we want to go down. Is Lisa in here?
No, no. But yeah, they, they were granted the funds. They, they spent the funds. Sometimes projects don't work out the way they originally were planned, but they followed, they followed all of the, the rules and guidelines at the time. Right? So I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that we would need to do anything. It's the, the process is done. I, I kind of, I, I kind of read the, the memo as more in, informing the board that this is kind of what happened. These, this is where we are now, but they wanted to make sure that the board of supervisors was aware what had happened with the project and what they're looking at doing moving forward because they got funding from the county. And so they just wanted to make sure they were being transparent. That's how I read the memo, not that they were asking which thing they should do. I think they, one, wanted to clarify that, that they were okay to move forward in whatever way they wanted and two, to be transparent that what they intended originally did not happen. And this is where we are now. Was that everybody else's read?
Not as much for mine, I guess. I, I, I guess I'm a little and Leanne, maybe you need to clarify. So of the ten thousand dollars, they did do what they were intending to do at that point and then things changed?
Yes, correct.
Everything. So, so that ten thousand was used correctly initially?
Yeah, staff has no concerns. The, the, the entire twenty three thousand dollars that was awarded was used in any way as not intended on the initial application.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think the confusing thing is just the way it's on the, on the agenda because it looks like we need to be making a, a decision on what
Right.
what should happen. But I, my, I don't believe we have any action to take, but correct me if I'm wrong.
The document that's on the agenda is a few months old. Right, because it ends. If you have any questions, I do plan if you attend the May second board of supervisors meeting. So, um, I would agree that the city of Collins operated in good faith with us and this is what they were doing. Their engineers were saying this was evidently a project they could do and they found out later from the same engineers that it wasn't going to work, but they did what? Yeah. In, in, yeah, in the future, maybe we can make a little, you know, we need to think about, is the project really shovel ready? This one wasn't. So, but no, I have no motion.
Okay.
And just, the language is on the agenda to match what was done in May to be, because there was never resolution to that at that point. It was, direction was given to staff to go get some, to receive feedback and opinion from the county attorney's office.
Okay.
And no action is perfect, is a perfect, perfectly acceptable way to take action.
Okay.
And finalize. And I will then draft a letter for signature from the board to just, or from the board chair, just say it is, it is, we are done at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Leanne.
No, great. Thanks for coming in, Lisa. Moving now to departmental reports. We have environmental health quarterly report. Good morning, Kimberly.
All right. Is that good?
All right, Debbie. I'll let you know if it's, if you're not talking into it closely enough.
Sounds good. Well, good morning. I submitted my report to you guys for review and rather than kind of going through all the, the tedious numbers and stuff, kind of just wanted to highlight a few things. Some, the aquatic program, our pool program. We just actually, we had finished all of our Story County inspections and we just yesterday wrapped up all of the, we contract to do Boone County pools as well through the state. And so we wrapped all those up yesterday as well. So everything there is looking pretty good. We're just doing some wrap up on compliance on a few of the facilities that had some, some violations that needed to be corrected. So as far as our septic program goes, everything's, it's kind of in full swing right now. When the, when it's not raining out, so we're having a lot of systems go in. We do have that new septic grant for the, the housing trust. We've had one system that was approved and installed and we've had a couple of other applications that came in, but they weren't eligible. And so we're working with the time of transfer inspectors and our pumpers. Those are the ones that usually see kind of the, the systems that kind of that are existing and have problems and letting them know about the program. And we're hopefully going to do some more promotion soon, just as soon as we're fully staffed, hopefully. So, but yeah, we're, we're working on that and seeing where we're getting, but so far it's, it's been going pretty well.
Right.
So. Let's see, as far as our well program, everything's looking good there. Our grants to counties program, we just wrapped up our report for fiscal year twenty three and we actually spent more money this year than what we've done in the past of what we're allocated. So we're usually, I think the last couple of years, we've gotten about fifty, we have up to fifty thousand dollars that we can get reimbursed. And so we're, we never usually meet that. But we, we got more done. We've been doing a lot more promotional activities. Laura's been doing some brochures and some different things and kind of just as we go out and do inspections, we're reminding people that we have these free samples that can be done. So, but yeah, so we did see some more activity this year and we're hoping to continue that for this coming year as well. So. Let's see, tanning and tattoo, everything is going good there. Tattoo inspections are all done. Tanning, Laura is getting trained in that program, so we're still working on those. And hopefully within the next few weeks, we'll be wrapping that, those up. As far as kind of just like an overview on like department and staff, we've done some, we worked with DMAC to do a soils training. So that was a class where different installers and counties can come and learn about how to do soil classification and how that impacts septic systems. That was a day-long event. Laura attended it. I had actually went last fall. And then we hosted it here in conjunction with Drain Tech and they did a couple like different holes that they dug and I think they had about maybe twenty five or thirty people in the class. It was, it ended up being a very good event and there was, one of the instructors was from Iowa State. So that was very nice. We did, I did some presentations and some trainings for some realtors on time of transfer program and how that affects like, you know, kind of just an overview of what it is and how it is that they deal with it. As well as, you know, what to, how to work that into their groundwater hazard statements when they're doing those things. So I think I had about between sixty and seventy attendees in those classes. So it was, it was good and like to do more of those specific, those, I think every year is just a good refresher for a lot of them. So. We actually had one of our board of health members do a ride along with us and I know Lisa is planning on coming out too. To kind of, you know, see what we do on a day to day. We never actually know. Sometimes we try to schedule things. I know Molly kind of learned that. It's like, well, we have this planned and then we had to change things up and do it. So. Again, I always want to invite you guys to, if you ever want to come out, it may take a while to schedule something, but we can always, we'd love to have you guys come out and
Thanks.
and see what we do. I have been involved in some of the stakeholder meetings with the realignment that's going on with the department of health. And the stakeholder meetings I've been involved with are for environmental health departments that are not with a public health agency. We have, our public health is contracted as hospital based. So I was in a stakeholder meeting specifically towards that. They've been doing other ones as well. And I know, I think I just heard yesterday, I have a meeting on Thursday where my professional association, we're doing a lot more on the backend of that to work with them and environmental health. Bringing us, our profession to the table a little bit more to understand fully what we do. So I can see you got some questions coming for me, Linda, so.
I know. I don't know. I, I attended one of the stakeholder, or a couple of stakeholder meetings and I'm really not sure what they're, if you got any sense of what they're planning on doing with environmental health.
No, we, we have a lot of suspicions, but nothing that's been totally confirmed yet. We've asked, we've heard about the regionalization, the different hubs, if they do those. You know, there's not been anything confirmed. We've heard if they do, it might be more population based, also based on more with counties that have the accredited public health programs in them. So we're not sure. None of it has been confirmed. We're not exactly sure where that's going to lead. If they're going to try to move towards district board of health versus local county board of health. We're not sure what the impact is going to actually have at the local level. Now, environmental health is part of public health, but a lot of the programs that we deal with are not necessarily through HHS. We deal a lot more with DNR. So that will definitely impact, you know, how we do things and move forward as well as some of our regulations that are coming out with all the changes that are being made to the administrative code. So.
And I'll just add, some of this is going to be discussed in our board of health meeting this afternoon.
My sense of the stakeholder meetings is the not, the purpose was not at all to give out any information. It's kind of like the purpose was to get some things for footnotes for a report.
Yeah, I think it, it was more of a feel-good. So, you know, kind of just make it look like they're, they're showing things. So we don't, it's hard to say. We're, my professional association, we're basically, we all know it's coming and we don't know exactly what it's going to look that, look like. So I know our big thing is just trying to get a seat at the table.
Yeah.
So that we have input and we can, you know.
Yeah.
So the, like the environmental health programs don't kind of get washed aside and they're like, oh, well, you know, we don't need a local board of health anymore, but environmental health does still. So we need to kind of see how that's going to lay out. So we're trying to get at the tables and we can, I think the board of the, I think the association of supervisors has something going on too.
We had a meeting and discussed it. I'm not sure where staff's going with it, but, but there were several people in that meeting who had been in various of the stakeholder public input meetings. And I think the sense is about the same. It's, direction is already set here. I really believe it is.
Yeah. And I'll know more, like Thursday, we have our, our meeting, our executive board meeting too. So we'll have a little bit more idea of what's going on too.
Did you get a chance to respond to the survey?
Not yet. I did see it. I have it up on my desktop to do, but I haven't had a chance to do it yet.
Because I got it from another person and I sent it to you. I didn't know if you'd already seen.
Yeah, no, we were, we had discussed that too because not everybody has gotten that. And then it's kind of, it's not going out to all the parties that really need it. So.
Feel free to pass on what I sent to you.
Okay. Well, we'll do that. So.
I think we, yeah.
Yeah. But I mean, I definitely think the board of health and the board of supervisors are going to kind of want to, you know, stay on top of this one, see what's going on and, and see what's happening. So I'll keep you informed as I know stuff.
From the ICSET group that I was on, I think the consensus was that with the, the realignment with health and human services put together right now, they have just a, they have a plenty on their plate that they need to work on. We heard some input or some feedback at some of the, in one of the stakeholder meetings that there's people supervising topics or programs that they don't understand and they don't know. And I think the basic thing that I was hearing with people was they need to slow down and make sure they're doing a good job with what they've already, the changes they've already made rather than continuing to say, now we're going to regionalize this and now we're going to regionalize that without really implementing things well.
Yeah.
That's my, that's my big concern.
Yeah. And I think they're going to have, I mean, I know what, I think by October, they're supposed to have some
Yeah.
report, some models and stuff, but I think once that happens and they make a decision, it'll probably move pretty quick.
I think so. Cause yeah, they've been saying the report will come out in October. The other thing that I heard through the stakeholder meetings that I attended was really a concern that we're, we're going to, if there's more regionalization, we're going to lose the communication and the coordination at the local level. And a lot of people talked about how well, you know, local public health, local environmental or local emergency planning administrations all work together with local jurisdictions. And if we go regional, don't have, don't have, you know, locations, don't have a presence in each county, how we're really going to lose that coordination.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the other big concern I've heard. And that's, that's the other big concern I've heard.
Yeah, and local services, I mean, we don't know if they regionalize. Are they going to be able to stay local or are they going to have to drive, you know?
Right. Two hours to get those same services that we have now, so we don't, you and, and others on your association and all the associations are continuing to participate in the stakeholder meetings, whether they feel like a feel good or, or, or not. The more, the more we can, um, put a uh, magnifying glass over the impact of changes, the better. So, um, you know, I know that takes a lot of time, but thank you.
I do have one question in your report, um, septic, septic system cleanouts. We have what's called a, we have a voluntary ordinance right now.
Right.
Since we can't enforce it thanks to the legislature.
Yes.
But do you get any sense if that is having any impact about people actually cleaning out their septic tanks?
Yeah, we're getting way less now, way less.
Sure.
And, uh, so we're not seeing as much, we still recommend it, we're still telling people it's, you know, it needs to be done. But yeah, we don't have any, any enforcement abilities, so on that.
Education.
Pretty much, yes, we just do a lot of education on it.
Yeah, that's where we are.
Quality, yeah.
So volunteering.
Thanks.
Yes, that is, do you have any other questions?
Any, any other questions supervisor Hens? No?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your report.
Uh, we have no other reports, any upcoming agenda items? No? Okay, now it's time for public comment number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any, uh, action due to market requirements of open meetings, lava may do so in the future. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can raise your hand on Zoom or step forward to the table. And seeing no one raise their hand or come forward, we'll close public comment number two and move to liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors. Supervisor Merkin, you want to?
Certainly. Uh, first supervisor Hens, are you going to be back next week?
Yes.
Um, I think I had KHOI local talk on my calendar, but I'm going to be gone, so you're taking it next week, correct?
Yep, yep, we are, we already did that and I've got my email that will go out to board members and, uh, elected officials to send me information, so.
Okay, great, just wanted to double check on that, okay.
Yep.
Tonight at six, I have AAMPO Ames Area Metropolitan Planning Organization meeting. Tomorrow, I'm working on a couple of different things, opioid settlement fund, uh, moving some things forward there. I have a story com quarterly meeting at two and I have at six thirty, it looks like I have a quarterly nine one one service board meeting. Thursday, working on with some staff on the, um, drainage, wetland projects, see if we can move forward on that. Also tomorrow, Thursday night, the asset and joint funders meeting, Friday meetings on broadband. And a regby after action meeting, I'll be here Monday, but I will be gone next week.
I can't hear you. Can you hear me?
We can now, yeah.
Okay, okay. Uh, so today I have de cap meeting this afternoon, board of health, and then I have a ARC board meeting tonight. Wednesday, so far nothing on my agenda. Thursday, I do have the asset joint funders meeting, I'm also working on some transportation issues. Friday, before I fly home, I do have a workforce meeting in the morning.
Great, and, um, I have a boost meeting tonight and tomorrow night. And, uh, the asset joint funders meeting Thursday night. Um, I'm attending the Ames Chambers State of Education, um, session Thursday morning too. And then, um, the rag right after action meeting. Looking at Monday, oh, no, that's just a note for myself. Um, Monday evening, though, we do have a city of Zering ARPA check presentation in the evening, and then I also have a Story County, um, opioid overdose awareness planning event that night too.
If not, conservation board Monday evening, so I won't be able to make it to Zering, I forgot about that.
Okay.
Will you be here Monday, um, evening for the ARPA check?
Yes, yes, I will, I'll be in the office Monday.
Fantastic. Okay, if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil, aye, we're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.